Welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, January 24th, 2011. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join me in the singing of "O Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to Mr. David Bray for his audio rendition of our anthem. So we'd start the meeting with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for that? councillor Rice?
I move... Oops, I'm sorry. I move that the minutes of the city council meeting held January 10th, 2011 be adopted.
Thank you. Were there any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. I'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. councillor Augustin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Were there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Next, we come to the delegation portion of our meeting. And this is an opportunity for any member of the community to come forward with a community issue, anything that they'd like to speak to council on. We did have one person who had notified us in advance that they'd like to make a presentation. And we have Mr. Aaron Mans, the manager, general manager for Aquiterra Utilities. Aaron?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to overview the new Aquiterra business plan for 2011 and 2012 and also speak in support of the related utility bylaw amendments that are later on in your agenda in the GGS portion. So the board approved a new two-year business plan in December of last year, and it looks at some of the changes in service and also the resources that we need for the next two years. In terms of some of the significant initiatives facing us from a solid waste perspective, we're looking forward to implementing curbside Blue Bayeque recycling next September. And by mid-2012, we hope to have a multi-family residential onsite collection service available as well, although we're not sure at this point what that'll look like. Also, from a solid waste perspective, we're working together with the county and the regional waste authority to develop a long-term solid waste strategy, and the city is also participating in that process. And so that'll look at the entire region over a long term and try and come up with the best solutions for everyone. From a water perspective, we're in actually really good shape in terms of ongoing capital requirements. Within the next few years, however, we will be looking at some work down at the river. The river itself is migrating north, to the north side, which is where our facilities are, and we'll need to protect the riverbank and at that time also put in a new water intake to continue to provide a source for that raw water for the long term. We've also done some work in looking at accommodating growth in the west end of the city, particularly looking at the reservoir that we have out at the airport. And at some point, we'll need to provide a dedicated water transmission line to provide more water to that reservoir as demand increases. And that also may be an issue with the new hospital and its new location as well. So other than that, the water system's in good shape. Our most significant challenges, I think overall, are on the wastewater side, primarily with our wastewater treatment plant that's now over 25 years old and requires a major upgrade, and it's driven by two reasons. One is to accommodate continued growth, and the second is to meet more stringent environmental standards that the province has laid out for us. So the initial capital cost for that is $45 million, and so that's the elephant in the room for us. It'll consume a lot of our borrowing capacity, and we've looked at deferring most other capital projects to accommodate that particular upgrade in the next two to four years, I guess. So the rates that commensurate with those challenges, we're looking at a relatively modest increase on the water side of 3.6%. On the solid waste side, again, I think it's a 3% increase for garbage collection. And with the introduction of the curbside recycling, there won't be any change to the recycling costs. In 2012, we hope that those costs will actually go down as we decommission the depot system. And once we have a residential multi-family program in place, we'll have a better sense of what those actual costs will look like. On the wastewater side, we're looking at a 9.7% increase in each of the next two years, again, to accommodate that major upgrade at the waste plant. That will result in an additional cost to a typical residential customer of about $3.10 a month in 2011 and an additional $3.40 in the following year for those wastewater charges. We're also in the process of transitioning to a different governance structure. As a result of the changes approved by all shareholders last summer, we're moving to an expanded board made up of nine members that are all public members. And so we have a special shareholders meeting planned for later this month that'll begin that process of new appointments, with it transitioning in full at our annual meeting in June. So that's a quick overview of our business plan and some of the highlights or major issues before us, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you have with respect to that or the utility bylaw changes that are also related to that.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Mans. I do see one in the queue right now, councillor Rice.
Three questions, if I may. The city's wastewater treatment charge is going up roughly 10%, but I believe Claremont and Sexsmith are going up substantially more, like 20 and 25%. So number one, why is their increase much more than ours? So I have four questions. So then this is a sub-question of question one. Their wastewater treatment charge now is still lower than ours, even if it is going up twice a percentage number. So can you explain that to me?
Sure. Each of the wastewater systems is intended to be self-supporting, and so when we've gone back and looked at the last number of years, we found that the Claremont and Sexsmith wastewater systems weren't and effectively were being cross-subsidized by, well, effectively the Grand Prairie wastewater system. So as you noted, those wastewater charges are relatively or significantly lower than those in Grand Prairie. And so part of the reason the increase seems so large is that they're not that significant a cost to begin with. And the reasons for the charges, again, are to recover the cost of operating those systems. In Claremont, we found that operating the lagoon with an aeration system has resulted in some significant power costs now that that system's in place. And we've also found that with a large amount of industrial use out there, that we're seeing sewer discharges well beyond the limits set in our bylaw, and that's resulted in a lagoon that was just upgraded a couple of years ago having to be dredged because of all of the solids that have gotten in there that really shouldn't be in there. So industrial monitoring is going to be a big focus in the Claremont system to try and reduce those ongoing operating costs. So those rate increases are certainly more significant than in the city. In Claremont, for example, the additional cost to a customer this year will be an additional $4 a month compared to the additional $3.10 in Grand Prairie.
Okay. Second question, if I may. The province has deemed that we will do a $45 million upgrade. Is there a group, we're not the only ones that got hit with this, it's all across the province, is, are you part of any sort of group that is saying to the province, excuse me?
Yeah, the issue of more stringent environmental standards, I must say, I think Alberta is one of the leaders in the country in terms of wastewater effluent standards. The challenge is that the requirement to upgrade doesn't happen to everyone all at once. So with approval renewals that are 10 years in duration, that's when the province has an opportunity to introduce higher standards. So some of the cities throughout the province have already upgraded their wastewater treatment plants. Calgary spent, it was over $300 million on a new one. Fort McMurray has just built a $220 million wastewater treatment plant. And so in terms of a concerted lobby group, because those are all happening at quite different times, we haven't had that concerted effort. We continue to work, though, with the province and as well with the federal government to pursue funding for the kind of environmental improvements that we're facing here.
Did Fort McMurray or Calgary get any money from the other levels of government that you're aware of?
I know Fort McMurray, I think, received $100 million for their water, wastewater systems from the province, as well as a $100 million interest-free loan. And so it's kind of ironic that they've completed a $220 million wastewater treatment plant, and yet their wastewater charges are the lowest among the cities that we've surveyed in the province.
Third question. I assume one of your, your main priority is to ensure access to clean drinking water for all of the people in the region, uninterrupted access to clean drinking water. Your business plan talks about measuring performance in key accountability areas and demonstrates your commitment to striking a balance between quality service at good value and responsibility to the communities while remaining a profitable, sustainable company. Can you give me one example of where you've balanced off those?
Sure. One of our focuses is to secure a long-term reliable raw water supply, and we've been working with the province on obtaining a new diversion license from the Wapiti River. We expect that diversion license to come into place this year. We were really the first in the province to obtain a diversion license that considered the quality of the effluent that we're returning at the same time that we're taking it out. And that flexibility shown by the province has saved us over $30 million in having to build off-stream storage, which would have been the alternative to what the province has approved for us. So I think that's an example where pursuing an innovation and some flexibility shown by the province has resulted in some significant savings to our utility customers. We do comparisons with other cities throughout the province in how our utility charges compare. And while we're somewhat higher than average, it's certainly an area that we're very conscious of and look for ways that we can continue to be more effective in how we provide service so that we can keep those rates reasonable.
Thank you very much. It's all my questions. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Rice. I see councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. A couple of questions I have for Aquiterra is, in the local paper, I've never read nothing about provincial government, the changes and how it's going to affect the taxpayers on paying the bill and $45 million. I think we could maybe get that out there and show the public, Joe and Susan, what's going on here. And a couple of questions. We went from in March '09, $69 a ton for waste at a dump, to $84 in June of '09. Now we're going to '89. And then back then, we went from five bucks to, you know, say, somebody going from their home, bringing some garbage, to 10 bucks. Now we're going to make it 12, and it just seems like we're going all over the board, raising everything. And I'm just wondering, is there some room here, some wiggle room? And, but anyways, it seems like it's added up everywhere. And how much would this be paid off with the 50 million that's going to go in that you have to spend? And what's the figures looking at by these increases? Are you going to come back in two years or whatever, the new board, and add on more? I'm kind of trying to direct with some of these increases, is it going to pay for the bill in 20 years or are you going to want more in two years? That's kind of what I'm asking. And I think the public doesn't know what's happened a little bit here. I've never seen it in the paper.
Okay. With respect to the landfill operation, I'm pleased to say that we're holding the line on any increases in tipping fees, and so there will be no increase planned for the next two years. The current rates that we are charging there are intended to ensure that the landfill and the solid waste operation is self-supporting. And so those tipping fees increased a couple of years ago to the current level to provide for that. We've seen, probably the landfill has been the hardest hit of our operations by the slowdown in the economy, where we're seeing significant reductions in the amount of volume coming in, whereas the cost of operating that facility is largely fixed. We're seeing a diversion of material within the city, kind of splitting between the Claremont landfill and our own landfill. And so we've seen a revenue drop in recent years that's been significant. And so in response to that, we've looked to reduce our expenses, and we've sold off equipment and laid off some staff to bring our costs in line with the revenues we've been receiving. So we'll continue to focus on ensuring that that operation is sustainable. And now, each of the utilities, again, is intended to be self-supporting. So the water system is intended to recover the costs of that system through the rates for water, same with wastewater, same with solid waste. And so the cost of the wastewater treatment plant is intended to be borne through the wastewater component of our utility charges. And that's why you're seeing those almost 10% rate increases in that utility and not in any of the others.
Councillor McLean?
Just the question I'm asking is, Alberta government says $45 million to the sewer part as well. How soon would this increase, has this been recovered? Like, is this a 20-year mortgage deal on this? And we don't know if we're going to get half back in grant or if we're going to have a delay of a couple of years. So there's a lot of what-ifs here as well.
Right.
So this is kind of, I'm asking a kind of a dead question, maybe you don't know, but maybe for sure if you don't know, the public don't know.
Yeah. Well, our current requirement to complete the upgrading and meet new standards is 2014, and so we're working towards that deadline, while at the same time, working with the province to see if there's opportunities to either stretch that out or to obtain some kind of support from the province. Currently, our business plan assumes that there isn't any funding support from them because there's no existing program that we can apply for in that regard. So depending on, so we've just hired a consultant in December to undertake the detailed design, and so in about six or eight months, we'll have a better sense of what the actual construction costs may look like. And then we'll see what, how that'll impact our rates further out. We will do substantial borrowing to fund this project and expect that borrowing to take at least 20 years to pay off. So the cost of this major upgrade will be borne and stretched out over that kind of a time horizon. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, councillor McLean. Any further questions for Aaron? No? Seeing none, then, Mr. Mans, if there is nothing further from you, thanks very much for making the presentation here today. We appreciate it. And I'd have to say as well, I think council appreciated the opportunity to have comment on the business plan while in advance in previous years. There had been a concern that Aquiterra's business plan would come to council first at a committee. The committee would see it, and the rates were sort of contained therein. And we really appreciate the opportunity that council had to, and all the shareholders had, to comment on Aquiterra's business plan while in advance of it coming here today. And so I think that was a good change to the process and hope to see that continue, especially with the new board coming in over the next while. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
So this is the opportunity for anyone in the community who wants to address council to come forward with any community issue. I would ask if there's anybody in the public that wants to come forward to address council, and I see that there is somebody. You're more than welcome to come and join us at the table. We'd ask that when you come up, just let us know your name and make your presentation. We do try to ask to keep it to about five minutes if you can. Please have a seat and welcome.
My name's Jamila King. If you've noticed your log online from Facebook, you probably noticed a lot of my posts. As many citizens say, I'm also angry at the snow clearing like everybody else, and you guys probably all have a headache by now. However, I spent the last two weeks doing up what every other city does in Alberta, as well as many other places, to show what the differences are in Grand Prairie versus here. Just a start of a proposal for you guys to maybe change it a little so that you don't have so many angry people. Most of the other cities in Alberta, I won't even use cities outside of Alberta just because people might have an issue with that. From October to April, they have 24-hour snow clearing. When there are storms coming and stuff, they set it up that way. Their cities do two 12-hour shifts. If it's not needed, they do the one 12-hour shift. How they judge the snow is usually it comes down between how much snow is coming on the roads and what the actual arterial and main bus route is like here. That's number one in their priority. But instead of waiting to see how much is down, they judge it anywhere from every city from, like I've talked to the Department of Transportation for Red Deer, Edmonton, Calgary, Lethbridge, and three other places. Their judgment is usually from three to five centimeters. And it's a real worry to them if eight centimeters is on the road or whatever. That's when they really get stuff going much faster than they, if there's more than eight centimeters forecast for next day, they're out there. As well, I know that there's a noise bylaw here in Grand Prairie. It seems like every other city from October to April, they have a petition or whatever set up in their city that if you have issues with noise during snow clearing equipment, then you just front it to the city. But it seems like everybody's fine from October to April, as long as city workers plow on the roads when need be. As well, I've also done a petition. I've started going to different communities to see how people feel about the whole noise thing, because I thought that would be a big deal. So far, I've done Royal Oaks, I live in Summit, and I've done, pardon Mission Heights and O'Brien. So far, nobody seems to have a problem with city equipment moving around while they're sleeping, as long as they can get to work in the morning. Like I said, this is just the beginning of what I have proposed for you guys. The other thing I was looking at is our budget in Grand Prairie is actually higher per area that we have to clear than both Lethbridge and Red Deer, and they actually have less equipment to work with per area. So I don't know how, like, exactly how you guys cleared it. I would have to see your actual policy and everything, where you go and whatever. But it seems like there's double the amount of work being done in certain areas where other places are neglected here, and maybe that's where the money is disappearing to. Like I said, I've only reviewed this for the last week. So if I, I plan on doing up the whole proposal of everything, but I've only had a few days to work on this, of course. But I'm open to any questions that you guys might have so far.
Okay. Thanks very much. Is there anybody that has any questions for this thing? Let's see, councillor Rice has a question.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by your proposal.
I will do up an entire thing on how, like, a completely different snow clearing ideal than what you have that will still work inside the budget with the equipment we have. I have it half-done, but I didn't feel that it was done enough to actually provide it to you tonight, basically.
So you're proposing to table this with us as a volunteer?
I could.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, councillor Rice. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, well, I say go forward on that and see what kind of advice you can give us, because I think we're going to be looking at this in our future about residential snow removal and any input we can have about, you say, comparisons to Red Deer, Lethbridge, maybe St. Albert. Go forward on it. Have community involvement and help us, direct us in a little different way that might help improve it. I congratulate you and do it.
And as you can see, there's a lot of talkers out there, but who's back there?
No, do it. It's good to look at.
And I've done seven years of political science and worked in like, worked in six different municipalities, and this behind me is ridiculous. So really, it is the community. They talk a lot, but they aren't willing to come out and show their support and stuff. So instead of being pissed off and coming here and just yelling and screaming, I spent my time to do a proposal that you could use with the budget you have and the equipment you have.
I look forward to having a look at that.
Okay.
Let's see, councillor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I've got just a couple of questions to ask or a couple of things for you to consider if you're doing research. One of the things I'm collecting is the amount of snow in these other cities. From what I've been gathering so far, Grand Prairie gets about 50% more snow than just about every other city in Alberta, which is kind of crazy.
And that's the reason why I actually did cities like St. John's Newfoundland, which gets way more snow than here. They have a smaller budget percentage for the actual amount of people, and there, for their whole city, it takes six weeks to clear it. That's a much bigger-sized city, and it's a lot less time. So to me, it's, I know they have a little more equipment, but I think there's certain pieces of equipment we do need here that we might want to look into because we need to use it in a certain way that we don't have right now.
Okay. Yeah, and that was the other thing I was going to ask you, if you could research, how long it takes every other city to clear every street.
And I've...
It takes us about six weeks.
Yeah. I've done Toronto and St. John's and Waterloo, just bigger cities, just to see what the standpoint is, as well as, like I said, Lethbridge, Calgary, Edmonton, and Red Deer, only because they don't obviously get as much snow as here in Grand Prairie because we're more northern. But places like St. John's Newfoundland, they get way more snow, and they have, they need to get rid of it. I'm personally from Newfoundland, and there's times that I've waken up in the mornings and it's up over my head in my doorway, let alone on the street. And in two days, they have my street cleared and I can go down it. It's heavy.
I guess the last thing to consider is service levels. That's what really takes a lot of time. We have to haul a lot of our snow away. Our graders also clear the end of everyone's driveway, and that takes a lot of time as well.
That was the other issue I was looking at, because in Newfoundland, we don't clear the end of everybody's driveway. They are responsible. If they want their snow moved at a faster pace, the end of their driveway, that's their responsibility. The other thing... The other thing is, instead of piling it all in the middle of the road like we do here, you know how you have those snow blowers that go down the sides and blow it up? We send one down the middle of the street to fill up the dump trucks, to send it away faster, instead of getting a snow plier to put it in each time like they've been doing it around here. It's half, not even half, it's like one-third the amount of time that it takes for those snow pliers or the loaders and stuff to fill up the dump truck disease for that snow blower to blow it all in there.
Okay. Thanks. Those are kind of the things that we're going to be discussing tomorrow at Public Works.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you, if you're available, but at ten o'clock, we're going to be having a meeting for Public Works and.
We'll see if I can get off work.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. King? I don't see any in the queue. So, thanks very much. If you do develop some information, first off, I appreciate it. This is fantastic. You're exactly right. There are not a lot of people who come to council tables with solutions or suggestions, and so I think council will all appreciate that. As you have information and develop it, I know that our administration is certainly comfortable in looking at that, and anything that you provide, I'm sure council would find it helpful as well. So, I encourage you to do that. As Councilor Wong mentioned, there is a Public Works Committee meeting coming up as early as tomorrow. But if you do take some time to develop your information, I think we'd be happy to have you submit it at any time and would certainly consider it.
Okay.
Thanks very much. Thanks for coming today. So, is there anyone further who wanted to address council on any matters related to anything community-wise? Looking out into the crowd, are two other people are shaking their heads saying, "No, no, not us, not us." Okay. Then, seeing nothing further, then we'll close the delegation portion of our meeting, and we'll move on to public hearings, of which we have none scheduled for tonight. We have no unfinished business, but we do have reports. And so, the first is item eight point one, Bylaw C-1015A. And Mr. Skavitch, I'd ask you to introduce this one.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The first item has to deal with the application that was received by the city to redistrict lands in the College Area Parks Redevelopment Plan to change them to a medium-density status, which would be reflected so in the future land use map. Currently, there were two buildings on the site. Apparently, those have been demolished. And the intent of the applicant is to construct two semi-detached dwellings, which would result in a total of four dwellings on that site.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so, we're here to set date, time, and location in the first reading. Can I have a motion for that? Councilor Rice?
I move first reading of Bylaw C-1015A to amend the College Park Area Redevelopment Plan.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion for first reading. We'll call a question. All of these into your votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Please carry on, Councilor Rice.
I move that council establish Tuesday, February 22nd, 2011, at seven o'clock PM in council chambers as the date, time, and location for public hearing purposes for Bylaw C-1015A. That meeting will be on Tuesday, the 22nd, as Monday, the 21st is Family Day in Alberta.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So, we have a motion on date, time, and location, noting that it will be on a Tuesday rather than council's regular Monday night meetings. Any discussion on date, time, or location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That was everything for that item of business. And on to item eight point two, Bylaw C-1100-168. Mr. Skavitch?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This application has to do with amending the land use bylaw to rezone the parcels previously discussed from restricted residential district to a DC or site-specific development control provision district.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can we have a motion on this item? Councilor Augustin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council give Bylaw C-1100-168 to amend the land use bylaw first reading.
Thanks very much. We'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Please carry on, Councilor Augustin.
Thank you. I'll move that council establish Tuesday, February 22nd, 2011, at seven PM in council chambers as the date, time, and location for public hearing purposes for Bylaw C-1100-168.
Okay. Thanks very much. Again, just to note that this will be on a Tuesday rather than council's regular Monday night. Any further discussion on date, time, and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Those were all of our, all of our reports, and we're on to regular committee business. And starting with item nine point one, the Public Works Committee. Councilor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held January 11th, 2011.
Thank you. Was there any discussion on those minutes? Errors or omissions that anyone noticed? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Please carry on, Councilor Wong.
I move that council approve expansion of the scope of work for ISL Engineering and Land Services Limited in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars, excluding GST, by sole sourcing the construction services for the 116th Street upgrades from eighty-fourth to Sixty-eighth Avenue. And in speaking to that, Mayor Given, this was, this was a street that council had identified in the budget to do some paving on, and ISL has been doing the work adjacent to that. And by sole sourcing the constructions or the engineering work, we're able to realize quite a bit of savings.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong?
I move that council approve the request to extend the period for subdivision approval and endorsement for subdivision application Z-2008-0016, Grand Banks Phase One, located at Northwest 11, 71, 6, west of the 6th. Plan 032-1859, Lot 1, Block 1, for one year, to expire on December 17th, 2011. This is similar to one that council has already extended a period for. The subdivision, subdivision approval authority has already extended them a one-year period, and council can now extend them an additional, grant them an additional one-year extension through the Public Works Committee recommendation.
Okay. Thanks very much. Councilor Wong, any discussion or debate? I see Councilor Rice.
One of the difficulties I know that we've identified in the near past was we're looking at land use bylaw amendments, and so if we grant extensions on development permits, it's obviously the Development Department doesn't see that this is going to create a problem.
Councilor Wong, you'll have to turn someone to the next speaker there, so. Councilor Wong?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Given. This is just for land division, and the plans still have to come to, to the city for development permits, in which case any of our current MDP and outline plan requirements will still be valid for any, any future development.
Okay. So, essentially, I think administration had advised council at committee that any new standards that would come along, that this development would have to meet that. Yes.
That's it.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong?
I move that council waive the fees and securities in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and one cent for the development and construction of the third fire hall. This is just some internal shifting or waiving of funds so that we don't have to pay ourselves to shift back into our other budgets.
Okay. Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate? Just seeing none, I would note that this is a standard practice that the city has done on a number of other projects. So, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Councilor Wong on that Public Works meeting? Seeing none, Councilor Wong, I think the next meeting was yours as well.
Yes, it is. I move that council receive the minutes of the Combat of Sports Commission meeting held January 11th, 2011.
Thank you. Was there anybody that caught any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong, anything to highlight from that meeting?
The only thing I can highlight is that this was a meeting to deal with the appeal of Savvy Productions. The committee felt that it was, the committee made the decision to uphold the appeal and to, which was to revoke the license for the event. The applicant did come forward. They didn't really have grounds for an appeal. They, we were asking if there was something in the process that they felt happened that shouldn't have happened, and that was not the ground, grounds for their appeal. They felt that the process was adhered to. They just simply missed the date. It was a clerical error. At this point in time, we felt that there wasn't enough time to, to make up for, for their error, basically, and for us to back out on the decision that we felt was made in, in, well, we felt it was the right decision to make at the time.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. I see Councilor Rice in queue. Did you have a question on that item?
I do. Councilor Wong, there was some, there seemed to have been some contention in their proposal that they, they made a check to the Crystal Center as opposed to the City of Grand Prairie, and that was why they missed the deadline. Is that accurate or?
Councilor Wong?
I wouldn't say that that's necessarily accurate. They made that check out to the Crystal Center, but it was three weeks late.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And anytime you're going to try to put down a security deposit, if it's going to be that late and you're hoping that it's going to be accepted, it should be certified and it should be made out to the right payee. It should be basically in the form of cash.
Okay. Okay. And any further questions?
Can I go back to the Public Works for one minute? We moved along quickly off now.
Okay. Once, sure. Please just ring in, Councilor Rice.
Yeah. Just, oh, okay. Just a very quick question. Correspondence from the province regarding the airport, the entrance to the airport, the horrible, terrible entrance to the airport, that the province says it's our highway and the posted ninety kilometers an hour is appropriate and traffic signals are not warranted at this time. Do we keep, like, we get many complaints about this. Do we keep bugging them and keep saying, "Do another one"?
I think the discussion at the committee was, was essentially just that, maybe in nicer form. But we did highlight it as one of the items that we would put on our list for when we go down to the legislature to talk to the minister, so that we can speak to them personally. The minister's letter did say that they were reviewing the results of their traffic study, so there may be some additional information. And when we have that, of course, that would be another opportunity to go back to the minister and highlight our, our need for this, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so, next, actually, Councilor Rice, I believe you have the General Government Services Committee.
I will. I move that council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held January 12th, 2011.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did anyone notice any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Rice?
Okay. We thank Mr. Mans for coming with his presentation this evening, and as his worship mentioned, providing us with our, an opportunity for input on the Aquatera business plan in a timely fashion. So, I would move that council receive the Aquatera Utilities 2011-2012 Business Plan for Information.
Okay. Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Rice?
I move first reading of Bylaw C-1139J to amend the City Aquatera Utility Bylaw.
Okay. Thank you very much. There is no debate on first reading, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you.
I move second reading of Bylaw C-1139J to amend the City Aquatera Utility Bylaw. And in speaking to it, I would say that under the agreement that we have, we have two choices with the increases from Aquatera. We can either pass them on as a user pay, or we can take it out of general revenues. By passing this bylaw, we have, we have chosen the user pay scenario.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on second reading of the utility bylaw? No? Okay. Seeing none, then, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion care, that motion carries. Councilor Rice?
I move that we have three readings of Bylaw C-1139J.
Thank you very much. So, a motion to have three readings. The motion must carry unanimously in order for us to have the third reading tonight. If it does not carry unanimously, then we would carry this over to the next meeting to have the third and final reading.
If I can just clarify, this does not mean that you are in favor of the motion, just proceeding with it.
So, what we're voting on is voting on whether we proceed with it tonight or whether we save it until next meeting?
Okay.
Okay. So, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Rice, would you like?
I move third reading of Bylaw C-1139J to amend the City Aquatera Utility Bylaw.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, this is the third and final reading of the utility bylaw. This motion does not need to be unanimous, and so I would call for the vote. That motion carries with one opposed. Councilor Rice, would you care to carry on?
I move that council approve the offer to purchase a single-family dwelling located at 9405-82nd Avenue, is presented with the total amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars less advertising legal fees, and a three percent Realtor commission to be added to the housing reserve. This is one of the houses in our affordable housing. It needed a lot of work. And obviously, I think we're very happy with the price we got for it. I think it was slightly above our asking price.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate or questions? I see Councilor Radburn in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is a good news story. This was the property that we were working with Habitat for Humanity, and that didn't work out. And we advertised it once before and didn't get bids. This time, we actually got twelve bids, as I recall. But I think kudos to administration. As I understand it, we did a little more advertising, and of course, we worked through the Realtor, but we did receive those very competitive bids. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Councilor McLean?
Councilor Radburn pretty well answered, but does this go on the Realty line to put bids? Like, how is this percentage for the public to look at if they do want to buy this?
MLS, do you mean?
Yes. Does this go on MLS for doing this, John or whoever?
Yeah. I, I believe it did go through the MLS, and that was the partnership with the Realtors. The City of Grand Prairie and the Grand Prairie Real Estate Board have had a very longstanding, successful relationship where they've supported our affordable housing initiatives by agreeing to a flat three percent commission on any sales that the city has done, which has certainly benefited to the community and certainly appreciated by, by council. Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Councilor Rice?
I would move.
Sorry, Councilor Rice. Can you just ring in your microphone?
Sorry. I would move that council approve Policy 112 Corporate Policy and Associated Procedure and Sponsorship Application Form. And this is a corporate sponsorship policy. The policy will create an application process for sponsorship requests. What this policy will do is, we have several organizations that, of course, come to the city for funding for various sources, sponsorship opportunities, that type of thing. This will coordinate them into one ask as opposed to them going to four or five different departments. So, it will create fairness and equity as well as fairness and efficiencies, I should say, I'm sorry. And the committee had sent it back one time feeling that, you know, those not-for-profits who are looking for a basket for a door prize, that we didn't want to make the application process too onerous. The committee was satisfied that the new policy and application form really, really made amendments that, that ensure this doesn't happen.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I see Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given, just to, I guess, compliment, supplement Counselor Rice's comments. Just kudos to, to admin. We were concerned that it might become an onerous process for not-for-profits, and they came back with a one-pager to apply, and a one-pager to report, and only if you receive a thousand dollars or more. I think two thousand dollars or more has to come to council, but I think there was some tweaking of the policy that made sense to me, so I'll certainly be supporting the motion.
Okay. Thanks very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. And Counselor Rice, I believe you have one final item on your agenda.
I do. I move that the city issue a request for information for development concepts for the former York Hotel and/or Germaine Park lands. The RFP, the RFI, I mean, will be open for sixty days to close April eighth. Council will note that this is a slight amendment from what appears in your agenda. The RFI must address the following principles. The proposal meets the concepts within the downtown enhancement plan and the municipal development plan. The proposal will explain the overall financial benefit to the city. The proposal will include project timelines, as well as developers' expertise in projects of this nature, including ability to complete and proven financial expertise, and further will explain the increase in density of the proposal and impact on activity in the downtown.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you.
This, certainly, this, this, we've had several, input from several people that they want to see this get moving very quickly, I think, tonight. You took a giant step forward. Just one other thing, if I may, I want to offer congratulations. The city of Grand Prairie's Aboriginal Student Job Shadowing Program is going to be honored at the Alberta Chamber of Resources Seventy-Fifth Annual Awards Banquet, to be held on February eleventh. And so, congratulations to our staff for taking part in this and, and doing it so well, that it was viewed to be outstanding from among the province.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So on to Environment Committee of January seventeenth, and Counselor Monroe, I believe that one was yours? If you just want to ring into the queue. There you go.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting held January seventeenth, two thousand and eleven.
Thanks very much. Were there any errors or omissions that anyone noticed in those minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that carries. And Counselor Monroe, please carry on.
I'll move that, thanks, Mayor Given, I'll move that council approve policy one-one-three idle reduction for implementation, February first, two thousand and eleven. And just to briefly speak about this idle reduction policy, this is for all of the city fleets and employees. It's basically a policy that indicates that we will monitor our vehicles and not run them, and, or will not idle them when the weather is minus ten or above plus twenty-five. Did I get that right? Or between those temperatures, thank you, sorry, my, my mistake. And with that being said, the goal is to, to keep our idling time down to sixty seconds in that temperature range. Now, there are some exceptions to this policy, and that includes anything that involves any type of safety concerns for city workers, or anything where it might be a unnecessary burden, such as emergency vehicles, which have to have, be continually running in order to utilize their computers and such. Another exemption would be our transit system, and the, with keeping with, I guess, customer satisfaction as far as having a warm bus. We don't want to let those vehicles be turned off. I believe that I've, I've covered most of it. I, I will, I would certainly entertain any question, any questions in regards to the idle reduction policy.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. I do see somebody in the queue for a discussion. Counselor Rice?
Okay, just, just to clarify and confirm, this policy is directive-only and restrictive-only as it relates to city vehicles. It does not have an implication for the public.
Counselor Monroe, do you want to turn your microphone on there for that?
City vehicles and contractors to the city are impacted by this. It does not affect any of the other, anyone that's non-city. The hopes of the policy are that perhaps maybe some other companies will adapt the similar policy, and I believe as well that the province is looking at, at an idle reduction policy, and when that comes available, we would certainly look at adapting that into our policy.
Well, is it the intent of the Environment Committee that they will make representations, say, through the Rotary Club and the Chamber, and that encouraging other businesses to, to enact this type of policy?
At this time, I'm not exactly sure if that would be the venues that they would use, but I think that they, I believe that Michelle is going to be presenting this to various companies.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Council, Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I guess, I just wanted to point out also that this isn't another job that we're asking our bylaw officers to help monitor. I believe this is, being an internal policy, that it would be up to staff supervisors to make sure that their staff are adhering to the policy.
Thank you, Counselor Wong. I will add that, pardon me, I guess I'll respond with, there was a certain amount of homework done before this policy was established, and they do have the full support of the supervisors throughout the city. They've, they've all discussed it with their staff, and they felt that this was a very workable policy.
Okay. Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. I see a few others in the queue. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Counselor, Mr. Monroe, the question I have is, is this just a part of the first stage? There's gonna be four stages in bringing this out, and as well, the act is only minus ten, there's something going on in the legislature to bring it up, but as our community lives in a colder, we get pretty cold up here compared to Calgary, we'll be looking at all kind of stuff. Right now, we'll follow maybe what the province is gonna do. This is just the start of the program. This is just start, see how proceeds, is that correct?
Thanks, Counselor McLean, absolutely. I mean, it is, it is a policy at this, at this state, certainly down the road, if, as things develop, I think we could see this develop into a bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much. I see Counselor Radburn in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thank you, Counselor Monroe. I, I just wanted to pick up on what Justin said. I, I do, I would commend our staff and Michelle for the leadership in working on this, to come to something that the city can move forward with, and show some leadership within the community, so I certainly will be supporting this motion.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'd call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. Counselor Monroe, is there anything further that you wanted to cover from there?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think there's just one last thing that came out of our meeting that I'd like to maybe share with everyone, and that was one of our delegation, or I guess our only delegation that came, was the Canadian Institute of Public Health Inspectors was there, wanting to discuss two thousand and eleven Environmental Public Health Week. And at the meeting, there was a motion put forth for the Mayor Given to proclaim January seventeenth to twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, as Environmental Public Health Week. And thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Yeah, thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Okay, so on to Protective Services Committee from January eighteenth, and Counselor Radburn, I think that's you. Just ring into the queue, and, cool.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held January eighteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Thank you very much. Has anyone noted any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Please carry on, Counselor Radburn.
Thank you. I move council approve the transfer of funds from the Fire Department Equipment Replacement and Business Initiatives Reserve to the Fire Department operating budget in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars as part of the two thousand and ten year-end financial process. The background to this is as follows. Due to an oversight during budget data entry, the Fire Department omitted to include an estimate for Fire Department dispatch equipment for, for annual equipment replacement in the two thousand and ten, actually, and two thousand and eleven budgets. Policy requires council approve transferring reserve funds, monies into the operational budget. So this was three hundred thousand dollars that was spent in two thousand and ten, that included such items as firefighter bunker gear, self-contained breathing apparatus, vehicle extrication equipment, portable and mobile radio equipment, hazardous materials detectors, thermal imaging cameras, and pump replacement on ladders. So this was an oversight, and the only way to deal with it is through the reserves, there are sufficient reserves to cover this, and we may have a similar, there could be a request at the end of two thousand and eleven because the same thing happened in two thousand and eleven, in terms of this administrative error. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. And so I do see Counselor Rice in the queue.
You're gonna buy all that with three hundred grand?
Yes. Yep.
Well, they must be going to a wholesaler.
They had the numbers there for us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And was there anything else to highlight from that set of minutes, Counselor Radburn?
I just did want to do, mention...
You're in.
...to council, that we did receive a, kind of, a report on the Northwest Regional Communications Center overview for, for all of us, in particular, our, our new counselors. Jeanne Blackburn presented that, and we did receive a report of the Youth Intervention Diversion Program by crime prevention staff, so they're both very informative.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much for that update. Next is Community Development Committee, and I believe that was Counselor Augustusson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held January eighteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Okay. Did anyone notice any errors or omissions in those minutes, as you read through them this weekend? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Augustusson, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from those minutes?
Um, yes, we had a number of correspondence in the meeting. The highlight of was the, we've been asked to host the, put in a bid to host the two thousand and fourteen Winter Games, so committee, committee directed administration to report and outline with the scope of work involved to host the two thousand and fourteen Winter Games, including sporting events, witch events, funding and volunteers to review at a further committee meeting. I believe it would be a good, another feather in our hat to, to host the games in Grand Prairie again, and that's all.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Augustusson. So from there, we'd move on to items of correspondence, of which this week we have none. The delegation business, certainly, the Aqua Terra one has been received. I wonder if maybe we could have a motion to receive for information in the presentation made by Ms. King. I see Counselor Rice.
I move that we receive Ms. King's presentation for information and await her further submission.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. I believe that deals with all of our delegation business. We have no notices of motion, and for council member reports, there were two that were noted ahead of time, and Counselor McLean, you wanted to report on Community Futures?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Community Futures Board, which I'm part of the committee, is, there's a lot to learn there, but they help in our community quite a bit. They've been operational twenty-five years, they're celebrating this year, so I wanted to make a note of that. They've helped about five hundred businesses out in that time, and there's quite a few in our downtown area that have had direct impact because of Community Futures, and they're hoping to come out with, and I hope I ain't taking the thunder from them, of kind of like a sticker in front of the business. Now, I don't know how it's gonna look, or anything like that, where basically, this individual business, or a couple of them, they were a part of Community Futures, developing on, on the way, and I think this is gonna be, I'm hoping it goes right through, and everyone that is part of it, I imagine, put it in their front window, because it's astounding how many businesses that were helped out because of Community Futures. So I just have to say that, and when I know a little bit more, I want to bring it to council. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for the update, Counselor McLean. Counselor Wong, you wanted to give us update on the Peace Watershed Planning Advisory?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I spent most of today at the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance Initiators Group, which met in Peace River. It's, the Initiators Group adopted the bylaws, process guidelines, and strategic plan, as well as the two thousand and eleven budget today. The society will be filing society formation documents, as well as a grant application to Alberta Environment to cover the two thousand and eleven expenses. Alberta Environment has been extremely supportive to date, and recognizes that the Peace River Basin is the last water basin to form a watershed advisory council in Alberta. As a bit of background information, the Peace River begins at the Bennett Dam in B.C. It is one of the largest water basins in terms of length in Alberta. It goes across to the east. Our role in it is that we contribute to that watershed. The water comes from the Wapee River, flows into the Smoky River, and meets up with the Peace River, or the Peace River just about at Peace River itself. The river itself travels east towards Fort Chipewyan, and empties into both Lake Athabasca and the Mackenzie River, depending on how the flow is. Sometimes it flows down, and sometimes it flows upward towards the north. Now, the Peace-Athabasca Delta, which is the area where the rivers converge, is an extremely sensitive area because it is downstream of everything. Back in the seventies, as a result of the DDT that was used in pesticides from all the farmers, the, the water was impacted and led to a near extinction of the Peregrine Falcon, which was affected in that, in that area because it is a breeding ground. So, on, on, once that was recognized by the, by the government, and DDT was, they stopped using it, they actually were able to salvage that species by creating a hatchery in Wainwright, Alberta, and they got most of the eggs from Fort Chipewyan area. It's, it was really interesting that the Peregrine Falcon, actually, they do something called double-clutching, which isn't, you know, what you do in a, in a big semi-truck, you know, with the double clutch, but when you, if you remove the eggs from their nest, they will lay another set of eggs that same season. So they were able to remove one set of eggs and set up a hatchery in Wainwright and repopulate the species. So most of the Peregrine Falcons in Canada were, were hatched from the Wainwright hatchery. And it was, you know, it's, it's a very unique and wonderful thing that they were able to do environmentally out of Alberta. In any case, that was just an aside note, it was, there was a lot of history that was given to us today. That was just one of those environmental feel-good moments. The job of the Watershed Advisory Council is to assess the current state of the watershed, and then make, make recommendations to the province for their Water for Life Plan. So the initial, the initial general meeting is gonna be held on March eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, in Peace River. This will formalize the group as a society, and will allow them to apply as a watershed advisory council. They're asking that once the public notice is ready to be put out, which should be no later than February sixteenth, because they need thirty days' notice before, before a general meeting, that the city posts that on, notice on their website, to see if there's any interested members from our area that would like to travel out to Peace River and be a part of the Watershed Advisory Council.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any questions for Counselor Wong? Counselor Rice?
Explain to me, how does the river flow upstream and downstream?
Well, apparently, when, when the Peace River flows extremely high, it forces the water down towards the Athabasca, so south towards the Athabasca, but in years where the flow is lower, there is more pressure from the southern lakes, from the southern lakes, and they flow, they force the direction of the river the other way, up towards the Mackenzie River.
Is that, is that Lake Common, or is that something unique?
It's fairly unique. It's, it's a modeling nightmare, apparently, for Alberta Environment, because they have hydrologists that try to... because they have hydrologists that try to model our lakes and to get an idea of flood and drought patterns. And this one, it just really baffles them.
Go see, this ranks right up there with you. Learn something new every day.
It's no wonder this is the last area to have a watershed advisory council if our watershed is that confusing.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any, anything further on that point?
No.
Seeing none. Okay, thanks very much. And Councilor Crokin, you had Prairie Gallery Board.
Thanks, Mayor Given. On January the nineteenth, I attended the Gallery Board meeting. And pleased to report the gallery is doing remarkably well despite the challenges that construction, as you all know, imposes upon it. The main exhibition space at the gallery has been closed since August thirty-first for construction, but the gallery has continued its service throughout programs in schools, exhibitions at other locations in Grand Prairie, and traveling throughout northwestern Alberta. Just in the last three months, even without an exhibition to see, the gallery received about two thousand visitors through its doors, just down thirty-six percent from the same year, period a year ago, but almost doubled the number that would have been expected prior to the construction of Montrose Center. Also in the past three months, approximately nineteen thousand people visited the traveling exhibitions throughout northwestern Alberta. In those three months, the gallery presented its traveling exhibitions in twenty-seven separate locations, including Grand Prairie Public Library, Saint Pat's Catholic School, Grand Prairie, and Saint Joseph's High School in Grand Prairie. The gallery's website was visited almost ten thousand times last quarter, and the gallery has an active social media presence that rivals some of our local media organizations in the size of its audience on Twitter and Facebook. I am especially pleased to report that over the past year, Prairie Gallery has contributed four million five thousand five hundred fifty dollars towards both the construction of the Montrose Center and the restoration of the Prairie Art Gallery from funds it has raised itself in grants and donations. Grant, the gallery hopes to have a new exhibition open in mid-March if construction permits, and the gallery building should be complete by the end of this year. That's it.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. If there were no further council member reports, we, oh, Councilor Rice has a question?
I have a question for Councilor O'Toole, our representative on the library board. When are we gonna get signs inside the library, the signs, you know, in the building there?
Inside the building? You're talking to Councilor Rice?
Like the washroom?
Sure.
Right now, we're in negotiations with the city to get a sign on the outside of the building. If you notice right now, it's kind of a portable makeshift type sign.
Yes.
We're dealing with the bylaws and that sort of thing right now. As for the signs, we're dealing with that as well.
Okay, so very near future.
It's a process, yes.
Councilor Rice, is there a particular signs?
No, there's just no signage at all inside or outside on that building, which is, you know, a shame because, you know.
I know exactly what you're talking about, and it's being discussed as we speak.
Thank you.
The process, there's a number of users in that facility, tenants, and they're coming up with something, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. So from there, maybe Councilor O'Toole, we'll start with you for Council Roundtable?
Okay, for the roundtable, on January eleventh, council and Atco Gas had a short informative meeting in with regards to what to expect over the next year in the Grand Prairie area. On later that day, some of the council met with the people at the Sunrise House. We had a tour of that, this is a youth emergency shelter, and we met with the executive director, Tanya Walden, and board member Sean Dirksen. This is a shelter that the Rotary had a big part in renovating the building and while the city of Grand Prairie had some funds invested in this project as well. This project, which I'm very happy to have in this community, operates twenty-four hours, seven days a week, with a maximum three-day stay, and it's for emergency use only, no long-term stays. On the twelfth, I attended the Chamber of Commerce luncheon with guest speaker from the A.T.B. discussing the economy and some of the practices that drove the economy of the U.S.A. down. And it was very informative meeting, which was very well-attended, one of the largest in the Centre Two Thousand Building. There was a number of councillors also in attendance there. On the thirteenth, the following morning, they had the Chamber of Commerce Morning Mixer. This was a special event that I was proud to be a part of. Menzies Printers made a substantial donation to the multiplex. And the details of a location in the multiplex with, will have some markings of the Menzies family. And I just want to thank the Menzies family for doing a fantastic support. The Menzies family has been in the community for a great number of years, so thank you. What else we went here? At lunch, the council was invited to meet with the public school board. This was a meeting that was scheduled long before the untimely passing of Superintendent Chris Gannett. Topics of discussion included the need of another high school in the Grand Prairie and the future growth of the school system. On the fourteenth, I attended the Big Brothers fundraiser, and I gotta admit, Alex's wife did very good. She won a prize. I think their backyard's gonna be looking pretty hot this year. And I also want to recommend, or thank Alex for giving Councilor Augustusson the greetings on behalf of the city at the beginning of the event. On the seventeenth, John Laners with the Alberta Health Services Board gave a presentation to the council, and we all, yeah. And on the eighteenth, I attended the Protective Services Meeting, Community Development. We had a library board meeting that day. I also attended the Drillers Football Meeting. They've got some discussions that they would like to deal with with the city. At present, we'll keep that kind of hush-hush. I met with a concerned citizen and answered some questions that he insisted that I meet with later on that day. So ten o'clock bedtime wasn't an issue. And I also went to the Archives Meeting and attending the Growing of the North Conference. So I was pretty busy. Thank you.
Not to toot your heart or anything.
Yeah, I got one more. I also want to pass on my condolences to the John McInnes. He was the owner, him and his wife both own J.B. Insurance, and he had an untimely passing earlier in January. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. And Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Besides our normal day routine in two weeks for committees and everything, there was a long Protective Services Committee. And I promised Councilor Wong that I would go to the Combat of Sports Lunchtime Announcement. And I ran out of the Protective Services Committee to get there on time. And it was scheduled for the next day, which I hadn't planned that day. So I just wanted to say to Councilor Wong, I'm looking forward to your first event and coming to the city. I'm sure you've been working on that quite a long time. The other thing as well, and I've seen other councils there, was the Northern Conference on January nineteenth, twenty, twenty-first. I was at it pretty well the majority of the time. There was a couple of events where a person had to step out. But a remarkable showing, I think the paper said, the front page, it was a hit. And it was a hit, and I hope it continues because northwest Alberta is an economic force in our community, and we need to go forward and have, make sure this conference continues and new ideas come forward on that. As well as this morning, we had an annexation meeting and an assessment meeting. And both of them, there's an awful lot involved, and the assessment one I'm gonna need more help with. But the annexation is looking forward to moving on. And I'll pass it on there.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On January thirteenth, I was present with council at the public school board meeting at their central office. On January seventeenth, I was present with council, I met with Alberta Health Services Board Member John Laners. On Wednesday, January nineteenth, I was at the Crystal Center when Evolution Fighting Championships made their media announcement that they'll be holding Grand Prairie's first mixed martial arts event on May fourteenth at the Crystal Center, and tickets will be on sale shortly. I want to thank Councilor Edburn and our Combat of Sports Commission Member Lee Finnabrotten for coming out to the event. I also want to recognize and thank Councilor McLean for coming out on, to support us on the Tuesday. That's when I invited council out on the wrong day. But thank you very much for making time in your schedule. And finally, on Thursday, January twentieth, I was at the Growing the North Conference. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor Rice?
I too attended the meeting with Atco Gas and the Menzies Morning Mixer and really appreciated their support for the multiplex. Attended the meeting with the public school board. Also attended an Alberta Recycling Management Association Board meeting. That's a tire electronics and paint, as well as a local authorities pension plan. And was suitably impressed by Councilor O'Toole's picture with Mike Holmes appearing on our webpage. Oh, now look at he's got to run to look at it.
He was asking me for advice.
Okay, that's really scary. And in a very serious note, I want to pass on my condolences to the family of former city alderman Harold McKay, who was a pleasure to work with when he was on Grand Prairie Council.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I've got nothing. On holidays.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On January the eleventh, I also was at the lunch with Atco. On the twelfth, Centre Two Thousand Lunch and Learn with the CIO of Alberta Treasury Branch, which was really informative. The Morning Mixer, and again, kudos to Grant and Jamie Menzies for the contribution to the spot in the multiplex. And on the fifteenth, I was very, very proud to represent Mayor Given and council at the High on Ice in Fort St. John. Now, you know I'm very, very talented, and we do have pictures, and I hope they're on the website. And we'll make sure Audrey gets those or whatever. Now, this is, I was taking part in cutting, and I'll just pass these around. But the power saw was, I had safety pants and boots on, so don't ever think that I wasn't protecting your commodity, which would be me. And they're looking forward to seeing yourself, Mr. Mayor Given, next year. I said, well, I will continue if he can't make it again. On sixteenth, I attended the noon meeting with John Laners. Very informative about our hospital and our region and the province. Nineteenth, I was at a gallery meeting. And the nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, of course, the Growing the North, and there were two very special people there. Our premier spoke of how much he appreciated the businessmen and the opportunities in the north. And kudos to him and our green people that are up in the north. And Mike Holmes, he was asking who did need some help out in the crowd, and I told him to go see Kevin. And that's all I have, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Augustusson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the Atco Gas Luncheon, the A.T.B. Luncheon Learn, the Chamber Mixer. Thanks again to Grant and Jamie Menzies for their generous donation. I also attended industry training put on by Janet Plant. Information gathering and sharing on the supply chain workshop and energy management as well. I attended the G.P. School District Board. And on behalf of Mayor Given, attended the Big Brothers and Big Sisters event at the Ultimate Escape Annual Fundraiser. It was a very good game of Deal or No Deal. Thanks that I brought my wife. I get to work in the backyard all summer. And I attended the Growing the North Conference the first night, a taste of, a taste of the peace, country peace, pre-conference event hosted by Farm Credit Canada. Tom Droug, founder of Spitz Seeds, on the story of Spitz Seeds, a farm business success. He grew his company from a five hundred thousand dollar a year company and sold it for thirty-five million. Very, very interesting story. Then the following day, I listened to Mr. David Chilton, the author of the Wealthy Barber book. His, we started out by saying that the world has too much debt, big debt problems. And he talked a lot about the first and second mortgages in the states where people have foreclosed on their mortgages, but they're still living in their houses for free. He asked a question, and if, what happens if China slows down? What would happen to our economy? Like, anybody got anything within, from China here? I imagine there's a few. Debt management's very important, living within our means. And he talked about saving money in home renovations, how many people get a crying line of credit to get a home renovation, and how you shouldn't do it because it's not really putting money in the right direction. Funny, last week, he also, or this, he mentioned our national pastime is complaining. I don't know if you guys heard any complaints last week, but I heard a few. But what he was alluding to was, you know, how we complain about our, you know, if somebody's on the other line, you gotta switch over on your cellphone. In the old days, if you had a zero on your number, you had to wait for the darn dial to go all the way around, and how much time that would take. And he doesn't understand why the healthcare, the biggest advice given out would be to eat an apple and go for a walk. I was also fortunate enough to run into Mayor Glenn Taylor there. He's a kingpin for the Real Development Fund. Thirty million dollars left in their funding to give out. They're short of applications. There's eighteen months left, left to access some of that funding. There's, they can give it out in up to five million dollars. Distimulate projects, unique ideas, and maybe some innovative schools, bridging finance, as well as bridging financing. I listened to the Prince Rupert transformation of the gateway of the Seacan Depot and the loading dock at Prince Rupert. And of course, I seen Kevin Zinal, Mr. Mike Holmes, host of Homes and Homes. Part of one thing, interesting stuff that he had to say was how we think green and promote green, however, we don't teach green. He gets a lot of slack about, you know, how he's very expensive and everything, but really, he's the right price for the right job, just like, you know, councillors. And he also talked a lot about vapor barrier and how the, how if you do things right the first time, you won't have to go back and do it again in regards to vapor barrier, that mold companies are one of the fastest-growing companies around. So do it right the first time. And he also spoke about how we teach. We teach carpenters and all the trades of theory instead of, or we should teach theory instead of just how to do it. Other interesting things he said was fifty percent of contractors will retire in the next ten years. So a growing city like Grand Prairie, we could be in a lot of trouble if we don't have fifty percent of our contractors. And he also spoke about the need to, we need to change our minimum codes to save our environments. Everybody builds to the minimum code instead of taking that extra step to do it right the first time. And, you know, there's seven billion people on this planet. What are we doing with our children? And he, with his building aspects, he warranties homes for five years, which is, really puts a lot on his name. And he finished off by saying, you don't know unless someone teaches you, so. A very good conference. I really liked it a lot. And I finished out the last two weeks going to the Storm Games, where they won some good games. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Augustusson. Councilor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Go quickly because things have been covered. Attended the council information session luncheon with Atco Gas. Did the tour and discussion with Sunrise House Director and Board Chair. I must say that I was very impressed with the changes in Sunrise House. And it looks like they're focusing on their mandate and moving forward very positively. Chamber Luncheon Learn, council information session with the public school district board. Council lunch with Mr. Laners. And as Dan, thank you, Dan, I did attend the Combat of Sports Media Conference. I did want to mention Jane Staff at the Crystal Center attended the media event as well. And so I thought that was very appropriate, so I thought that was very good. They were there on the right day. I attended the Growing North Conference as well, took in the banquet. I attended the Growing North Conference as well, took in the banquet Thursday evening and was there Thursday and Friday. I did attend the Storm Game and the Heart and Stroke one, so I was sitting in my regular seat as I watched Mayor Given perform the ceremonial face-off. I think he wanted to do a proclamation too, but it was, it was there. And on the twenty-fourth, this morning, I attended the Annexation Taxation One-O-One Session. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Radburn. The events that I attended over the last couple of weeks, I also attended, of course, the lunch with Atco representatives, and it was good to note that, obviously, very close partners with the city of Grand Prairie. Both representatives from Atco Gas and Atco Electric were there. Later that day, I was at Sunrise House with a couple of other members of council. January twelfth, I was at Centre Two Thousand in the evening for a presentation from the CEO and chief economist of ATB Financial, which was enlightening and certainly was bullish on the future for the Peace Country and Alberta as a whole. Later that evening, I was at the Service Placens and Suites to, for a farewell for Lorraine Gabriel, who is going to be leaving the Service Placens and Suites, and we wish her well and all her new adventures. January thirteenth, in the morning, I was up early for the Morning Mixer at Menzies. As noted, we certainly appreciate the support of the Menzies family personally and their business entities, and I think the Menzies community spot is a very fitting place for them to find a home in the multiplex, and I think another good community partner coming on board. Later that day, I attended at the Stars Lottery launch at Kia Motors. Good to see that the Stars Lottery is underway. It's a fantastic event which provides really the majority of their sort of supplemental funding throughout the course of the year. The lotteries always do sell out, and so I would encourage people to get their tickets early if they can. And thanks very much to GP Kia for supporting Stars. If you look around town as the Stars vehicles drive around, they are often Kia vehicles, and that's due to that partnership. And then, later that day, I was at the Grand Prairie, meeting with the Grand Prairie Public School Board, and then I flew down to Edmonton that evening, where the next day I attended at the AUMA Mayor's Symposium. I wasn't able to make the first day, but on the second day, they had a fairly wide range of speakers that looked at issues from balanced leadership to the financial obligations and audit obligations and legal obligations that mayors have, and I really appreciated the opportunity to meet with some of the colleagues from across the province. January seventeenth, of course, I was here at City Hall for the meeting with Alberta Health Services Board Member John Laners. And then, January eighteenth and nineteenth, I was at the Growing the North Conference, was, had the privilege of having dinner with the premier one evening, and the next day bringing greetings on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie and Grand Prairie council. I have to say about the conference that this year, I opened my eyes to what a fantastic asset we have locally in this conference. The quality of speakers that we had drew people from all across the province, and oftentimes, that's not the case. If we want to see that quality of speakers, we have to go somewhere else, and so I have to say to the organizers that they've done a fantastic job in building this conference to something that draws people into Grand Prairie rather than us having to go somewhere else, and so hopefully we see that continue. And I'm very proud that the city of Grand Prairie was a partner, a financial partner in supporting that conference this year. And then, one other note was that on the morning of the eighteenth, the presidents of Canfor, Ainsworth, and Warehouser were all in attendance, and from people in the forestry industry that were in attendance, they say that that's the first time that they can remember all of those folks in the same room to make a presentation on the same stage on the same day, and so I think that was really, really good to see, and it was very comforting to know that all three of those organizations have taken some very unique steps to ensure that they're financially viable in the Grand Prairie region, and in fact, are still committed to looking at the expansion plans in some cases. Ainsworth still has on their drawing board an expansion plan for over a hundred million dollars, and both the others are economically very healthy, so it's good to see that. Later that evening, I attended at the Storm Game for the Grand, for the Heart and Stroke Foundation. I was there to read a proclamation, but I think in the program, it just ended up a little bit speedy, so we didn't get that opportunity. For those who did buy tickets for the red dress, I appreciate their support, and I know the Heart and Stroke Foundation was. Unfortunately, a bet's a bet, and the target was five hundred tickets sold, and my understanding is the number was somewhere around two hundred and sixty, two hundred and eighty tickets sold. So, all people got to see was me with a red boa. So, I pulled out the feather boa on Centre Ice and put it on. I was happy to do that, happy to support the Heart and Stroke Foundation, and of course, there's always, I was happy not to wear the red dress, but of course, there's always next year, and so we'll try that again. On Saturday, January twentieth, I attended on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie at the Celebration of Life for former Superintendent Chris Gannett. And a celebration of life should really look at the excellent qualities in a person, and I have to say that leaving Chris's event, I was inspired to do more in my role on council, and I think that really speaks to what type of person he was and the role that he had in our community. And then, finally, on another sad note, I want to extend on behalf of city council our heartfelt condolences to the family of Steve Kay, one of our city staff who passed away suddenly. Of course, these are always very difficult times to deal with, and so our love and support to his family and to his city of Grand Prairie family who will be missing him. And with that, that's all I have to report.